Yeah, I'd like to call to order the April 3, 2023 City Council Meeting at 7:01. All rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Hey. Roll call, we have all council members are present. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda? By Counselor Santiago, any second?
A second.
By Counselor LaFrenz, any question, question? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye, oh, same sign. Motion carries. Right spot. This is a public comment. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Speakers are limited to their testimony to five minutes as we are limited to 30 minutes total for all public comments. I do have a timer and if you're online, I will let you know when your one minute is up. If you're in person, you can see it on the clock. Five minutes per person. And we'll start, I've got one here, Beth Reiski. You'd like to step on up?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff and Residents. My name is Beth Reiski and I'm here as a board member of the Grant Watts Parent Organization with an exciting invite to our annual spring auction. Grant Watts Parent Organization, GWPO, is a group of volunteers who are passionate about supporting students, educators, staff, classrooms, and overall the Grant Watts Elementary School. We encourage involvement, foster collaboration, deliver experiences, and support efforts that go beyond the regular school budget. We're happy to announce that the 2023 Spring Auction is in person at the Columbia County Fairgrounds on Saturday, May 13. Tickets must be purchased in advance, so get them while you can, please. And we invite families, friends, and community members to come together, enjoy a meal being catered by Wild Current, and raise funds for the students and staff at Grant Watts. This event will have events such as Restaurant Row featuring gift cards from local restaurants, Wine and Beer Wall, silent and live auctions, and a photo backdrop to capture this community event. For a small fee, childcare will be offered in connection with a licensed provider and the Scappus High School volunteers. The fee from this childcare will cover pizza and activities as well as support the organization of those high school volunteers. GWPO is also accepting donations and sponsorships leading up to this event. So if you'd like to support the event and the overall work of the organization, your generous contribution would be appreciated. Funds from this event go towards things like teacher stipends, multi-grade activity events, field trips, community events such as the Hearts and Arrows Valentine Dance, and the Harvest Festival in the fall. We love supporting our students, staff, and school, but we couldn't do it without the support of our community. Love to see you at the auction on Saturday, May 13. For more information, you can go to our website at GWPO.org. And we thank you and hope to see you there.
Thank you. Okay, any more? Anything online? Okay, JJ?
Hello, my name is JJ Duran. I'm the Vice Chair of the Scappus Parks Committee and have been very excited to work on a number of service projects, including our big Earth Day coming up this Saturday. We have worked very hard on this as we have Movies in the Park, which those of you that attended know how successful that was. And we are anticipating that same level success with Earth Day. You know, it's interesting, there's a little backstory. Three years ago, I was sitting in my office during COVID, wondering what I should do to try to make the world a better place, and I decided I would call Tesla and find out if they could give us superchargers in Columbia County. A year later, I got them to come to Columbia County, meet with Columbia River PUD, and now we have four Tesla superchargers, two chargers from Columbia River PUD that are going to be operative very soon. That is, and when we talk about skin in the game, my idea of skin in the game is being of service to my community. There's no money in it for me. We are here to simply make the world a better place. And we hope that all of you go in that spirit as well with the work that you do here. So unlike charging for anything, this is all free. We actually had asked the Watts House to charge a dollar for the lemonade they're doing this Saturday, and they insisted that they were giving it away for free. So we have the grocery outlet that is donating hamburgers and hot dogs. Feltanos Pizza is donating pizza. We've got tons of swag from our sponsors. We've developed great relationships, community relationships with PCC, Comcast, Les Schwab, and many others that have come on board to support this event. It also looks like they'll be supporting Movies in the Park because at the end of the day, I believe that events that we do in this community are about building community and including everyone in the process. So if you would like to have a great time, oh, and if you'd like to help, if you have some skin in the day game to be of service to our community, at 7:30 on Saturday morning, Fred Meyer is donating all the breakfast as well as the juice. Then, of course, I had to go to Starbucks, so we have fabulous coffee. And so if you register to do the soft pickup, we're going to be doing trash pickup along the highway and at Chapman Landing. And of course, a big shout out to Chief Lugel and the Scappus Police. They're going to be the grill masters for the event, and they do so much for this community. And we're so happy that you're here, supporting us the way that you do. So if you want to see what community service is all about, show up Saturday at 11 o'clock. We start, we've got live music, we've got the ukulele band from the library kicking it off. We've got great activities for the kids. Librarians have been busy at work, means Nursery is donating a buttload of plants. So we're going to be giving away a lot and giving a lot of love. So we hope that you all come out, join us, and support our efforts.
JJ, well said, thank you.
All right, any more, Susan? Anyone else? Thank you very much, JJ. Okay, consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion. We're looking at consent agenda is the April 3, 2023 City Council Work Session Minutes, and April 3, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes, and a contract approval contract 2023-07-Keys Road Reservoir Tank Engineering. Looking for a motion to Peru approve the consent agenda.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Miller, any seconds? Second by Counselor Santiago, any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye, closed? Motion carried. Hey, we're on to new business, Community Development Fee Study. Uh, Community Development Director Lori Oliver-Joseph is here with Rob Moody with Marino and Company.
We had one.
Old business.
Franchise.
Did I skip one?
Okay, that's number two.
This is.
All right. It'll be quick.
Oh, that's my bad. Number two, ordinance, 912, an ordinance relating to the delivery of power within the city of Scappus and granting a non-exclusive franchise to Columbia River PUD Public Utility District. We are on our second reading. Information, City Manager Alex Rains.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So you had voted unanimously to sign a 20-year agreement commencing in July of 2023. As discussed, even though this was a 20-year agreement, we do have the opportunity to renegotiate at 10 if there's any concerns. There was no requested changes to the agreement, so it's the same as presented previously, and it's ready for approval.
Okay, we've already had a motion and a second, and we are in discussion. Questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye, closed? Carries. Hey, community, new business, Community Development Center Fee Study. Uh, direct, Community Development Director Lori Oliver-Joseph with Rob Moody with Marino and Company.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you recall, I brought a draft of the CDC Fee Study to you during a work session February 21st. There were a few things requested during the last meeting, and I also had an email from Mayor Bacchus and also from Counselor Santiago, which I responded to. Those were the only comments I received after, after the hearing or meeting. But I just wanted to walk you through a couple of things that we did add, that Rob added for us. So the main thing is that you did request to see some planning fee comparables from other cities. So previously, we had the engineering inspection and plan review fee comparable only. And so what we did this time is, so we have a lot of different planning applications. I think I counted, there's over like 33 different varieties. Each city kind of structures things differently, pretty hard to put all that into one study. So what I did was I asked Rob to, to provide, we did four comparables of our most common types of applications just so you can get a picture of where we're at with across these 10 other jurisdictions. And so we looked at subdivisions, including the preliminary and final plat fees. We looked at annexations, site development review, which is our most common type of application. So any kind of new building gets built, it requires site development review. And then we also looked at home occupation permit fees. So these are, the graphs are starting on page 68, and I'm referring to the, the red numbering in the center of the page. And so how this is laid out, hopefully you've all had a chance to do your homework and read your packets. How these are laid out is, Rob has it broken into planning-only fees, current, combined planning and engineering, current, and then the same too as proposed. Planning-only proposed, and then the combined proposed fees. One thing to note, though, is, one thing we wanted to really point out here is that in a lot of other jurisdictions, almost all of those that we looked at, with the exception of one or two, they don't charge engineering fees at the time of land use application. They only charge engineering fees once it's through planning approval, and it's moving on to construction document review and inspection fees. Um, we saw that pretty much across the board. Chris did, our city engineer, did call some of these agencies specifically to ask them about this. They said they don't charge at the time of land use application, but that they thought that that was an excellent idea and something they would probably start doing. And the reason for that is, there, there is a lot of time that goes into vetting an application before it goes to the Planning Commission. And there are times, just like with Healthy Smiles you saw, that they don't go toward, they don't move on, and they don't get built. And in that case, then, all the time that Chris has spent vetting the application, you know, he doesn't, he doesn't see any money from that. So I don't think it's inappropriate that we're charging for our engineer to review our applications upfront to make sure that they're viable projects. But what that means is that when you're looking at the comparables, you'll see, I mean, in a lot of cases, the planning-only fees were low. We kind of already knew that. When you look at the combined planning and engineering current fees, those are more or less in line with what we're seeing in other cities. And then as you're looking at the planning-only proposed, those are actually fairly in line as well. But once you get into the combined planning and engineering proposed is where you really see our fees creep up because, again, engineering is included as well. This, again, the, the concept that Rob was going for and what Alex asked for in this study is let's look at what cost recovery looks like. So you'll notice, this was also a question that was asked last time was, you know, what are we leaving on the table? You know, how much money are we leaving on the table for applications that we're processing? And so you'll see on page 73, Appendix VI. There are a couple of different columns here. Towards the right at the top, you'll see what the cost of service is in that column for each type of application. To the right of that, it does state the current fees as a percentage of that cost of service. So the first few pages, there's a couple of planning applications on here, but it goes into sort of engineering as well. Once you get over to page 75, and you look at that current fees as a percentage of cost, these are mostly, these are all going into the planning applications. You'll see percentages of like 22%, 32%, 21%, 18%. And so we're really collecting just a small percentage of what it costs to actually perform that service, yes.
Do you know what the other cities do as a percentage roughly? Are they all over the board, some hundreds, some zeros?
We wouldn't know that just because we don't know what their cost of service is. So, but that just illustrates to you, we're never going to have 100% cost recovery for everything we do because some of what we do is admin and we're, you know, coordinating amongst other city departments and fulfilling council goals and, you know, meeting with people who may not, you know, ever develop into a project for development. And so, but, but when we do have an application, then we have an opportunity to, to recover our cost of service. And so, again, the question tonight, once you all have had a chance to look at the study and consider it, is where would you like to land as far as, would, would you want cost recovery? And that's how we set our fees, in which case, Rob has outlined that in the, in the three last columns there. One's a suggested planning, suggested engineering, and then total fee amount. Or, you know, I think the mayor last time had sort of expressed, you know, a desire to bring in more money to, to help fund the planning department, which is the component of the general fund. But at the same time, not wanting to discourage any sort of development as well. And so perhaps there might be an opportunity for council to just direct staff to say, you know, hey, maybe we want 75% of cost recovery, but we're not willing to take it to 100% at this time. And so staff would just be looking tonight for approval of sort of which direction you would like us to go so that when we bring the fee schedule back for adoption in June, we know what to set those fees at to propose.
Thank you, Counselor Santiago.
Just to clarify, Lori, on page 73, you guys are showing what the current fees are, the, the cost of services. And so the what's on, I guess, in the red box?
Yes.
You want to charge, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's like, for example, right now, current fees are 1,300 for 49K, and you want to charge 1,500. I don't think that's a big difference.
It's not, and the thought here was to kind of simplify, actually, this chart here, to say that, you know, at the lower value projects, the prices stay very reasonable. So as the prices go up, you'll see that the cost of service is in that, well, it's 4,461. So for the lower cost, for the lower-priced projects, we're just keeping that cost at 1,500 and then keeping it at 4,500 for the next tier. So having two tiers instead of multiple.
You're actually reducing the price for 5 million plus.
Correct.
Like we have that many projects anyway.
Again, it was based on cost recovery, and since that's what it aligned with, that's what the, the recommendation was. Thank you.
I clarify.
Looking through this, most of these recommendation suggestions are total cost recovery.
That's, they are based on that, mm-hmm.
For the record, I think your name was mentioned in our work session, but you weren't here yet. Wasn't it his name that was, didn't, didn't, during the urban renewal, he said, you asked questions about compression and, and didn't they say you need to consult with, with Rob on that? Did you not get?
It was Pop. They were talking about Nick Poppenek, although I was half tempted to make Rob drag him up here to start answering questions, but I didn't know if he'd appreciate that so much, so I was like, all right, I won't.
Hey.
But it, but it is Nick who specializes in urban renewal, specific financing, which is kind of its own animal. But in terms of compression, I knew he could probably speak to some of that, so.
Yeah.
I wasn't gonna, like that.
Thank you, Alex.
I just want to acknowledge that you do know what you're talking about. And you're recognized for your work, so.
You clearly don't know my wife, so I appreciate that comment. I appreciate all this work. It definitely shows that we, we were pretty low before, and so you definitely need to get caught up, how much, yes.
So just to the cost of the charges of right now, they, I've already changed the page.
Sure.
In the first column, those are, and those are not being charged if they don't go to construction, right? That's my.
No, 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 no. So, so planning fees, right? So at the time, someone submits a site development review application. Someone wants to build a new, you know, I don't know, Taco Bell. They're going to have to submit fees to us so that we'll process their land use application. Let's say then they go through, all the way through, Planning Commission approves the application. Something changed, market changes, they decide they don't want to move forward with the project. Then they wouldn't be paying for the engineering planning review fees and inspections, which are on page 71. So that, those fees get charged once it's a real project, they're ready to break ground. Then we collect those fees, but the planning fees are always paid prior to us touching the application or processing.
Airways already.
Yeah.
Okay. Because you're saying that some of the cities, I, I think it's only Milwaukee and Sherwood that do charge?
That the engineering portion, they're still collecting the planning portion.
And do you see that as a barrier for development?
Did, did you have something, Peter?
Yeah. One thing to keep in mind with this city as opposed to like a Wilsonville is that we have significant topographical challenges. So if it's cities completely flat, like a Sherwood or a Wilsonville, the, the amount of review that the city engineer needs to do as far as things like streets and lots, it's just significantly more. And so this is a comparison to other cities, but it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And then the, the other piece of that is if, if we're looking at Happy Valley's fees, because the areas they're annexing and doing that work for were all formerly in Damascus, there's been just a extreme amount of data that has already been collected that they can tap into around Damascus, like seven different call plans. So it's, we just have, we have less data than other jurisdictions, and we also have slope challenges and floodplain challenges.
And wetlands.
And wetland challenge.
And airport overlays and. So I have not seen, but to answer your question, I think your question is, do we see it as like a hindrance to development that we're charging for planning and engineering at land use submittal? I've never heard anything to that effect.
And you want to keep it, I mean, if you said 100%, you want to keep everything at that or 75? You don't want to look at the engineering, be 75% cost recovery, but the planning part of it would be 100%.
This is, this is up to you for, this is what we're looking for direction on. I do not recommend that, and nor did, nor did the fee schedule recommend any changes to engineering fees once it's in the construction phase. So we're only looking at land use fees, so not construction, engineering. We're looking at land use fees as they relate to processing planning applications, which does have an engineering and planning component. As far as what you would want to do, because obviously it's broken out into planning only and then combined, is if you were feeling like, you know, the combined fees were too high, you could just, just choose to increase the planning fees to 100% and just do engineering to 75, or any combination would work.
That's the only one I was looking, they're just such a big increase. But again, we're comparing it to people that may not charge at all, so it's hard to know. But it jumps up so big on just a couple of them.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
To Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be possible to look at kind of a graduated scale of engineering fees based on the challenges of the site or location? Whereas like you have a flat site, your engineering fee is going to be a lot less. There's going to be a lot less work that goes into it. You've got a wetlands or a slope.
I mean, I guess the initial issue I see with that is that would be a little hard to define in a fee schedule. Very difficult, yeah. And then there was Rob saying unless you did time and materials. And then the issue with that is that then you're increasing the time it takes to process because you're tracking every five-minute increment or however you decide to do it. Is far, but to your point, I guess in a way, some of that, like say you have steep slopes or you have, you know, weird, wonky lots where there's floodplain or there's wetlands or something. We do have sensitive lands permits that are required for sites like that. So you're kind of capturing that anyway. So I, I don't know that there would be a great way to get to that, to, to like quote a cost to someone before knowing really all the ins and outs of their property.
So the cost you have here is just an average? Cost of service for planning kind of is based on?
Yeah, it's an average. We made some assumptions about how long it takes generally to process. It also includes time for our admin person to intake the application. It, it, it involves time for her to do the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting for me to review the minutes. I mean, it's, we were very in-depth of every single step we have to take as we're handling an application throughout the process.
If there's a big difference, you broke them down based on value or based on acres, I mean.
Yeah, so we made an assumption in the report. We, we stated our assumptions, so like annexation was, I think, the two acres. See. Because we wanted it to be apples for apples when we compared to the other cities. So, okay, so for annexations, it was five acres. We assumed there was no special elections required and no separate zone change fees in the calculations. For site development review, we assumed a construction value of a million, a single building in a total of five acres. We don't calculate fees based on the number of buildings on site, but some of the other cities did. So Rob had to establish that as, you know, what we were looking at. And then for subdivisions, we assumed a total of two acres and 10 lots just so you could easily do the math in your head if you were trying to figure out if it was 20 lots or 40 lots or what have you.
So are we looking for an approval now, or you said you're gonna?
We are looking for an approval tonight. I do have some suggested or sample motions you could look at on page 58. But we're really looking to be able to get our fee schedule drafted and ready to bring back to you in June. So we do need time to be able to do that, so. So, yeah, and so you'll see here on page 58, we do have a recommendation that you would consider option one or two. And then if you were to go with option two, that you just specify what that percentage might be.
This is indefinite. I mean, it's not a year thing, but we can review it in a year or two. I mean, you can.
Oh, anytime, yeah. So every June, you're going to adopt a new fee resolution, and these fees can be adjusted at any time.
Want to do 75% now, but bumped it to 100% next year.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Anybody have a recommended motion or?
Can I ask one more question? So do we have kind of a, a general estimate of what percentage of current costs are being covered, like in total? I mean, I see, you know, line item here, 67%, 79%, but when you add all of that up, are we at like currently 50% or?
I don't have a really great answer, and Rob can help explain.
I don't, I don't have like a lump sum. But if you look at the general fund support to the Community Development Department, it was significant in terms of how much is not being covered by fees. So you kind of can back into that.
Yeah, because I can tell you, I did look at, so planning, planning expenditures is roughly. Yeah, because I can tell you, I did look at, uh, so planning, planning expenditures is roughly ten percent of general fund expenditures. Um, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, this fiscal year, um, in the adopted budget, the total expenditure for Planning Department is seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine. And I have budgeted that we would collect forty-three thousand in fees. That's six percent. Now, mind you, like I said, we're not, it's not that always busy processing land use applications. I have a number of deadlines this week. But, um, we don't collect for everything we do. So it's never gonna be, you know, you're never gonna collect that whole seven forty-five. Um, but we'd like to just get it, you know, get that percentage up, um, a bit if we could.
Yes.
Is the, uh, fees that, uh, Lori's talking about, are they under, uh, material and services, Lori? Expenditures for general funds?
It's a combination, actually. Some of it is personals, personnel services, and some of it is materials and services in terms of the Planning Department's expenditures.
That's why, could, Jimmie Prior, was it, be high, not me?
Yeah, but just looking at it, I, I would think twenty to twenty-five percent overall might be what we recovered. Yes.
Lori, what's your sweet spot?
I think that, uh, I would be curious to see how we would do at the seventy-five percent cost recovery mark and, you know, see how it goes over this next year. See, see if we hear anything, um, from the development community. Uh, if we do, I could let you know, and then we would know for the following year to maybe reassess. Um, if you wanted to be a little more conservative, we could just roll them up fifty percent from where they are now compared to the, you know, trying to do full cost recovery so that they are bumped up, but not maybe, you know, all the way rolled up.
You did like seventy-five percent, you know, some of these on the partitions are already over that. So would you just do full cost or you wouldn't want to lower them to seventy-five percent, or would you?
It's not that I would lower, uh, in, in other words, the percentage is, um, of, of the proposed fee adjustments. So I'm not going to go back. I'm not gonna, you know what I mean? Like, i- it would still be an increase, um, over what it is now. It just wouldn't be a hundred percent cost recovery. It would be seventy-five percent cost recovery.
Some of these are already at eighty-six or ninety-nine or seventy-nine percent. So they would, it could go up to a hu- it, those are so close to, wouldn't it be that big of an increase?
And we could redline those. We could just keep them where they're at.
I have one more question. So myself personally, as a holder of a type-one home occupancy, um, license, do I need to recuse myself? Oh, okay.
I have a question for you because we did issue that fairly recently. Would it have been a hindrance to you if we had charged the hundred dollars that we're recommending here?
Um, no.
Okay.
That's what I paid back in Portland, right? Or actually a hundred and fifty, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Well, I suggest, uh, I move that council approve, uh, that council approved the seventy-five percent of proposed fee adjustments to presented in appendix six, Marina and Marina plus Co. Community Development fee, the report.
We have a motion from Council Santiago to approve seventy-five percent of the proposed fee adjustments as presented in appendix six of the Marina plus Co. Community Development Fee Review Report. Second. Being none.
Second? No? Waiting? We're gonna let it die?
You can.
I don't like to talk, so I like to let other people do it. I was just waiting for someone else to do it.
You guys make it sound like you won't.
Oh, no, no, no. I was just trying not to be like bossy and second. Yeah, how long do you let it go? Yeah, I was like.
All second.
Okay, we have.
I'm just trying to share.
Second.
Thank you.
Seventy-five percent cost recovery, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm trying to get you, you know.
Uh, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, it was a. Right.
I know. Okay, uh, moving on, number four, resolution number twenty-three dash oh-six, intergovernmental aid agreement with Scapu's Rural Fire District. Assistant Public Works Director Hugh Whitehouse. Going to work on this resolution first.
Mayor, Council, uh, thank you, uh, for hearing the next item on the agenda. So Resolution twenty-three dash zero-six considers an intergovernmental agreement uh, with the Scapu's Rural Fire District. That agreement is to provide enforcement of the Oregon Fire Code as adopted within city limits. As you might know, ordinance nine oh-six that council adopted towards the end of last calendar year uh, regulates the use of fireworks within city limits. That's above and beyond the state of Oregon's categorical ban on illegal fireworks. This is restricting fireworks to being used on certain holidays within city limits. As you might not be aware of, uh, and Chief Pritchard, please jump in if I mischaracterize this. Fire District, a special district, doesn't have that same authority as it would have if it were a department of the city to enforce municipal code regulations and ordinances in city limits. This intergovernmental agreement seeks to get at that and provide that authority to Scapu's Fire. It's also accompanied with a draft ordinance nine fourteen, which amends the Scapu's Municipal Code to essentially add that language to our code to extend the authority to the Fire District. Chief Pritchard, would you like to jump in?
Well said.
Thank you.
No, as, as, uh, the, the Assistant Bullock Works Superintendent identified, the biggest challenge for the Fire District, uh, or any Fire District in the state of Oregon is that when we get called for any kind of nuisance, whether it be fireworks or illegal burning, basically write, uh, a note that says you can't do this. And then people will crumple it up, throw it into the fire and say, what are you gonna do? So not that we want to be the enforcers of everything, but we do want to be a partner with the city when the city says, hey, help. We, uh, you know, we need to mitigate some situations. We can work collaboratively together.
Can I ask a question? So I, I do support the resolution and ordinance. Um, is it, it's not going to be that much more work on your department to write up additional, to actually enforce?
The, the additional workload is only going to be learning how to navigate the, the municipal court system because that's not something that we do currently. So as far as the, the paperwork in the apparatus that all the officers or firefighters are accustomed to, that's not going to change per se, but what happens after the fact will be a big lift.
You guys have to come back and like testify or bear witness?
That will be part of the process.
How was last summer, um, fireworks in, in the city?
There were a few folks that were not following the ordinance, uh, but it wasn't as bad as in previous years. We, we always have nuisance calls for a variety of different things regarding the Fire Code.
No more discussion. I'm looking for a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement, Resolution twenty-three oh-six.
I move Council to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero-six, Resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Scapu's Rural Fire Protection District and City Scapu's relating to Fire Code enforcement.
We have a motion by Councilor the Friends, any second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McHugh. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
So one of the reasons this came forward was because of the, uh, fact of being able to witness the actual violations. And we wanted the Fire District personnel to be able to issue citations if they did observe the violation occurring. One of the problems that we were running into in the past was the police officer didn't observe the observation, or excuse me, didn't, didn't observe the violation. So this gives basically another set of eyes and ears, so to speak, that can actually issue a citation.
So you visualize it or you see them having illegal fireworks?
Him set them off.
Yeah, I mean, chances are we'll get a phone call or a request from either law enforcement or the nine-one-one agency that says, hey, somebody's not doing something appropriate. And then as we motor into the area, hopefully we'll see it and then we can take action.
If you don't see it, but you do confiscate illegal fireworks, is that as well?
So, did you repeat that last question?
Illegal fireworks, um, you guys write tickets for those as well?
You didn't see him light them off, though.
Generally, we try not to write tickets. The, 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 the goal is not to punish or penalize somebody if they're willing to give up, uh, the fireworks. And that's, that's pretty customary even for most law enforcement entities across the state that do this now. It's better for us to remove the hazard it is to take any further action. And we would probably follow that unless somebody was belligerent or not cooperating.
I, I have one other question. So you brought up a good point for illegal burns, and you're just basically writing on a piece of paper that they can toss into the fire, toss into the illegal burn. Would it be helpful if we extended this also for you to be able to take enforcement action on illegal burns? Is that something that we should consider, Kenet?
Well, Council Miller, I'm glad you asked that question uh, because the language in the proposed code update specifically accounts for that. This is not specific to fireworks. It's specific to any fire violation, Fire Code as adopted by Scapu's Fire.
Okay, we have a motion, a second discussion anymore? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And carries? Takes us into number five, um, an ordinance nine, number nine fourteen, an ordinance amending the Scapu's Municipal Code Title zero-eight, Chapter eight point zero-eight, Fire Prevention Regulations. Is a public hearing and first reading, so Assistant to Public Works Director Hugh Whitehouse.
Mayor. And as I mentioned before, uh, Councilor Miller, uh, the language in this update, which was antiquated, um, for example, compliance with regu- regulations referred to federal and state agencies that don't exist anymore. So we went ahead and cleaned that language up and then added a section, um, about compliance with enforcement of the adopted Fire Code. So essentially this is written to, it doesn't need to be updated as the Oregon Fire Code is updated over time. It simply is reference to the most currently adopted version of that code with its amendments.
Good. Uh, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on ordinance nine fourteen, an ordinance amending the Scapu's Municipal Code Title zero-eight, Chapter eight point zero-eight, Fire Prevention Regulations? Being none, I will close the public hearing and move it forward to Council to discuss. Looking for a motion then?
Excited.
Okay, looking for an ordinance then to motion to accept an ordinance nine fourteen. Uh, Councilor Santiago, motion to accept ordinance nine fourteen, any second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Miller. Okay, being that this is a first reading, we'll leave it at that and pick it up at our next meeting. Counsel.
Thank you both.
Council, thank you.
Just a clarification for the record really quick. So this only covers, um, violations that occur within the city limits. I only mention that because the Fire District encompasses areas outside of the city. So just to make sure that everybody's clear on that, this only extends to the area within the city limits.
So right now you don't have these type of agreements with county or in any of your other districts?
There's no Fire District in the county at this time that I'm aware of that has this type of agreement place, which I think is a step in the right direction, especially based on several of the conversations we've had at Fire Defense Board meetings with relations to illegal burns and, and the nuisances that that causes all the fire agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our number. An ordinance, another one, number nine thirteen, an ordinance related to the cable television franchise agreement and repealing ordinance number eight twenty-three. We are also in a public hearing, first reading, City Manager Alexander Rains.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Um, so this is the last franchise agreement I'll bring you in a long time, so, hey. So our agreement with Comcast has expired, um, so we did negotiate a new agreement and we, you have a draft version of that agreement tonight in your packet. Um, so obviously it's provided in its entirety for your review. The couple of items we did want to bring your attention to is simply that the term is being proposed as ten years. It does include new language about the free, uh, basic cable service that we provided or that Comcast provided, the complimentary service to specific entities. You see here, you know, we've got the Police Department, High School, Otto Peterson and Grant Walk Elementary Schools, the Middle School, and the Fire Department and Senior Center. Um, I went ahead and I reached out to all of those entities. Either they simply didn't use the basic service or they use something well and above that. So it really wasn't a concern of theirs. Um, we think it's highly unlikely that Comcast would discontinue that service, but now they have that option. Let's see, section four point two, um, the new language is being proposed simply because, um, the FCC eliminated eight regulation at the local level. Um, and then you'll see there are some notes here about the fiscal impact. The fee will remain the same at five percent. This is the legal limit, um, so it's as high as it can be. We will be eliminating, or the proposal is to eliminate the city's peg fee. This was ten thousand dollars a year that was provided to the city for the, um, implementation of a public access channel. We aren't able to meet the, the requirements for that program. Um, it's pretty challenging. We just simply don't have capacity. You need probably about twenty-five hours of content a week. Um, it's just not something that we can produce with ten thousand dollars a year. So that is proposed to be, um, eliminated. But I would also add that I think we found a lot more effective ways of actually communicating with the community, which is the entire point of the public access channel. Um, we've massively increased our social media presence. We have our city app. We do our city newsletter. We have our town meetings. Um, the Police Department's been doing a lot of community events. So, um, I still think we are, you know, accomplishing that goal just through other, other means. I do have a representative of Comcast actually on the line if you have specific questions about the agreement or any of the proposed changes, so she could speak directly to it. Samantha, can you hear us? I think you're still on mute, but. Awesome, hi.
I can hear you.
Great. So, um, so again, um, if you have any real specific questions, um, she's here and available to answer. Peter helped me negotiate this as well, so I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, so all of the changes that are in this agreement were either driven by changes in federal law um, or just changes in, or evolving understanding of exactly what parameters we would need to hit in order to be eligible for certain programs. And the, the reason, one of the things that, that Alex mentioned.
And the, the reason, one of the things that Alex mentioned, which is the free cable in Oregon that, we're in the Ninth Circuit, and what the courts in Oregon, I believe it was Eugene, Samantha, correct me if I'm wrong, what they said was that in order to deduct that free cable from the amount that the city got, that the cable provider would have to prove how much it cost them to provide. So instead of their other circuits where it's like Comcast charges X amount, so they multiply it by the number of free services, they can conduct that. In Oregon, because of the way that our federal courts have ruled, it simply wouldn't be feasible for any cable provider to be able to make that calculation, certainly not to existing ones. So that was another reason that Alex and I were not terribly concerned about this change. And then I think she did a good job with the public access. We have some clarification on exactly how much content we would need to provide. It's just we're not, we're not anywhere close. So it's a relatively small deduction, but we're, we're, the great news about this is now letting Samantha know about other opportunities to participate in the communities, community, and possibly doing a project with the county as well. This, I think Commissioner Garrett's really excited about the potential of. So I think there'll be some really good opportunities for Comcast to demonstrate their support.
All right, we don't have any questions for you.
I got one.
Here we go, we'll give you one.
Well, at one time, we used to have a CCTV board and they were responsible for programming on the air. And a lot of the programming was city council meetings and a lot of athletic events. They weren't live, but they were played, you know, they were broadcast after the event actually took place. And it seemed to work pretty well. We had some actual programming that people wanted to do a program and it was, but it took a person, a volunteer that put a lot of time into that. And I don't know if that person really exists anymore, but it wa- it seemed to be doable and I don't know if that, I was on the committee, I don't know if we had any official authority, but we were the ones that, you know, approved planning and, and the, the schedule for the television for the, for the week and which games would be, you know, filmed and broadcast. And is that still an option if somebody really wanted to step in there and do a public service kind of thing?
I think that's to me, again, Samantha Ritter-Bush, Local Government Affairs Director for Comcast. Absolutely, there are a number of public access channels, not within Columbia County, but if somebody really felt compelled and passionate about producing content and wanted to work with one of those public access channels, they would be able to. They would just need to coordinate that. I will say Alex outlined it really well. When we do an overview of kind of how frequently those channels are watched, maybe in comparison when they're live recorded, you know, whether that's on YouTube, Facebook Live, we're utilizing those outlets, the numbers aren't as compelling, but as a resource to the community, yeah. And if you had somebody you wanted to send my way, I could try to help and facilitate, facilitate those conversations.
Thank you.
Counselor Santiago.
So just to clarify, you did reach out to these other, like the high schools and the other entities? And they are not using the ba- basics cable that they're providing for free, but they're paying above and beyond. So now that they're taking that away, would the fee, would they pay?
They're not taking it away.
Good with notice. Which allows them to eliminate it.
So one of the things to keep in mind for Comcast is that they are a nationwide, they have na- they're nationwide. So they have franchise agreements with all of these, all, in all these different states and all these different federal courts. So it might be that whatever district, NSE is, and that is to Comcast, the way that you'll calculate the cost of providing this service is by how much it would cost a regular consumer. And then they might say the city of Memphis has 2,000 people receiving free. So at that point, then the city of Memphis could potentially give up that rev- because we're capped at 5%, right? So there are areas where this section would matter, but practically speaking, because the, the Ninth Circuit has said, cable provider, you must prove what it actually fiscally costs you to provide this in order to deduct it. There is no way that that could be provided. So this clause is in every franchise agreement that they have. In some places, it matters a lot, or I don't know. I mean, because I don't know how, what the maximum number of free cable boxes there are for any city. But in cities in Oregon, unless a lot changes, it really doesn't matter because they don't, they could not easily calculate it and there would be a big fight. But it, the, the other thing is if they provide us with notice and we have a set amount of time in order to either pay the money or, so we'd say, hey, high school, do you want to pay 20 bucks a month? Or if we don't want to, then they can't sneak up on people and be like, ha ha, you owe us $40. Like instead, that people would be like, we don't even use that. Like the, you know, we check, check with Chief Pritchard and their cable package is much larger. So for us, we just, the, the odds of them being able to do anything are as close to zero as you could get and the impact on this, on our providers that receive for free that aren't even using it, they didn't even know they were getting free cable, to be honest with you.
My other question is, does this include people, low income people that are getting cable for free or not?
This is for, this is for their certain municipal providers that get that this program is specific to them.
Okay.
So this would be like the high school. The Comcast actually has some great for low income people as far as access to the internet for modest means people that have some really good programs. And this doesn't impact that at all. In fact, part of what we're working with Samantha and Commissioner Garrett on is expanding that, potentially expanding that to more households, both in the city and outside of the city, using some perhaps leftover ARPA funds that are specifically broadband. I can't say what the percentage is of, we get that, it's too early in the process. But Samantha's been a great partner as far as trying to help people, particularly people with modest means, um, with that sort of accent.
Anything else? Any suggested, suggested motions?
Mayor?
Yes.
I will go ahead and move that council adopt ordinance 913 as presented.
Counselor Holmes to move adopt ordinance 913 as presented, any second? By Counselor Santiago, any discussion? We're going to leave it at that. This is a, do a public hearing. I do it during discussion or rewind?
You hit me with that question one more time.
This is a public hearing, so I need to open up a public hearing. Then vote again.
You could ask members of the audience online if they would like to weigh in.
Is there anybody like to comment on ordinance 913 related to the cable television franchise agreement and repealing ordinance 823? Being none, I will close the public hearing and move it forward to a motion.
Yeah, okay. I move that council adopt ordinance 913 as presented.
And then repeal ordinance 823.
And repeal ordinance 823.
And motion by Counselor Holmes, second by Counselor Santiago. Okay, we will leave it at that point and we will come back at next meeting.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, announcements. We got a calendar. We do have an Economic Development Committee meeting Thursday, April 20th at noon, followed by Parks and Rec Committee meeting at 6:00. Big birthday event, April 22nd. Should get out for that. And then April 27th, a planning commission at 7:00 PM. And into May.
Believe, is there a 50-year plan committee meeting on the 25th?
They talked about canceling that one time you.
Okay, so that may 28, March 28th, it did not happen, okay.
There is a career fair at PCC on April 27th as well. Uh, May 1st, council work session 6:00 PM, followed by council meeting at 7:00 PM. We're into budget committee meetings, May 10th, 5:30, first budget committee meeting, followed by on Thursday, May 11th, the budget committee meeting at 5:30 if needed. And we do have farmer's market opens up, May 13th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Council work session 6:00 PM on Monday, May 15th, followed by county, council meeting at 7:00 PM. May 16th, budget committee meeting, 5:30 if needed. May 18th, Park and Rec Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. May 20th, another farmer's market, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May 25th, Planning Commission at 7:00 PM. Our third mark farmer's market, May 27th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And May 29th, our city office are closed. And then we will have a 50-year SAC meeting, May 20, May 30th, at 6:00 PM. Okay, update, City Manager, Rains?
Um, I just wanted to thank everyone for attending the annual town meeting. It was great to see you all there and thank staff for their attendance as well. I think it was successful and that I hope everyone can make it this, out this weekend for Earth Day. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Chief Lagal?
I don't have a lot for you, just some great news that Alec graduated on Friday. Hopefully we'll see, well, we will see Frank in a couple of weeks. Lieutenant is down at the academy finishing up his two-week ECO, so he'll be back on Monday. We did have, I did have interviews with two potential candidates on Thursday and we're hoping to put an offer letter out, so tomorrow.
Great.
Moving forward slowly, but we're getting there.
See you Saturday.
Definitely. I was voluntold by JJ.
Rain or rain or rain. Okay, Counselor LaFrenz?
No comments tonight, Mayor, thanks.
You, Counselor Santiago.
Alex took all of my announcements, but that's okay. Again, Earth Day this weekend, Saturday. Also, Kim and I attended a, the ribbon cutting for OMAC, their new center, and that was, it was a good, good turnout, bill of day. And so, and I'll just let Mayor Backus explain that there was a big announcement that was made and so it was a great event.
Thank you. Counselor McHugh?
Just, we have a new president at the Senior Center, Clara Pill. And Kay Stuckwaring had to design her position due to health reasons. So anyway, she's, she'd put a lot of work into that in the last couple of years and it's greatly appreciated, but Clara's going to do a good job to keep things going in maybe an even more positive way. Lots of things need to be done at the Senior Center still. And, uh, but I think they're, they're aware of those things and they're, they're moving forward as best they can.
Thank you. I think I read her say that Bingo's coming back hopefully shortly. Yeah. Counselor Holmes?
Um, yep. Quickly, it was great to see the support that OMAC is receiving, not just, you know, from within the state and the partnership with the Oregon Technology Institute, but really at the federal level. I mean, we are getting broad recognition for this facility, so it's exciting to see what it'll bring to the community. And then just looking forward to next week, going to the League of Oregon Cities event, spring conference and connecting with other elected officials and learning more about the hot topics.
Thank you, Counselor Miller.
I do not have anything. Thank you.
You. Counselor President Grayson?
Um, I just wanted to thank Mayor Backus for his leadership and I was very proud and grateful for your comments and kicking off the annual town meeting. I thought you did an excellent job, very professional, so you should feel really good about that. One last comment, again, there is a school board election among other elections as well as other big topics on the ballot coming up in May. And as with any election, as many of you know, after just running a campaign, so much false information out there or misconceptions about candidates or certain levies, measures, et cetera. And I just encourage citizens to go to the source and seek out the information and ask the questions themselves, because I know as a, as an educator, a school board is so important. They are making decisions that affect my livelihood as a professional, but also what occurs in the classroom for the students. And I just encourage citizens to not just go at hearsay or what they think is occurring in a classroom or at schools, but actually talking to the staff members and the administrators to get that, that information and vote.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank all the staff for helping with the town meeting and run nice and smoothly. It was fun getting out and meeting new people, had a good day there. Definitely, I will be at Earth Day after cleaning up some facility. Hopefully Chapman Landing will be standing around answering questions for anybody that wants to come and speak to me. I did have a couple of trainings last week. One was government ethics. One was executive session information. And then we had a great meeting with US mayors. We had about 30 mayors from around city, cities. We met with Merkley's candid, uh, campaign group, Wyden staff, talked about all of us mayors, what our issues are in our cities. Again, homelessness, an affordable, you know, less expensive housing was tops on lots of lists. But infrastructure was definitely on, and a lot of the city's list. Uh, mental health programs and, and the police and public safety as well. A lot of people talking about how it's hard for them to hire and can't get people through academies. So we've, we're the same as a lot of these other cities. Very blessed right now that our infrastructure seems to be doing very well. We've had some good foresight in planning. I think that's, we've been very benefited by that. What Counselor Santiago was referring to is Columbia Economic Team got a grant for $814,000. It was for planning, engineering and design of the advanced and additive manufacturing small business incubator. So that will be going for them and it will be very needed. Also, Paul wanted to thank Megan and I for coming to the childcare leadership meeting today. It seems to be becoming a big issue within Columbia County childcare and I think that's something we really need to look forward to here in the near future, how we can help. And then May 1, speaking on school board, I know most of you will at our council meeting watching us. They do have meet the candidates at the high school on May 1st, so all the candidates will be there answering questions, I think. We'll get out to meet the, the candidates for school board. That is all I have for tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you.